All right, that was loud. I'll call to order Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners Committee of the whole for November 5th, 2025. Clerk, would you please call?
Commissioner Mazur, Commissioner Morales, Commissioner Ray, Chair Strebs.
Here.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler, Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gisler.
Here.
Vice Chair Protem Hepler.
Here.
You have six present.
Thank you, Clerk. I did hear communication from Commissioner Wheeler. She will not be in session with us this evening. They lost a firefighter in Oshkamow Township and she's helping to attend to the community there this evening. And Commissioner Ray is in another appointment. Jay Santon will join us shortly. Okay, with that, we'll move to public comment. It's an opportunity for public comment can be made in person or by phone by calling 855-925-2801 and entering meeting code 10748 and press star three to join the queue. This is your opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes on any topic in a professional and respectful manner. Once you're recognized, either virtually or in person, please share your name and where you're from. And you have up to, again, three minutes. Is there anybody wishing to join us for public comment? Welcome to come forward to the podium. And then you'll see a button there with the person on it to press to speak. There you go. That work? Welcome.
All right. Hello, everybody. I'm Chandra Kinney. I'm with the Kalamazoo Conservation District. I'm just here to give some updates on our community services. One, our Michigan Agriculture Environmental Association program technician, James Benjamin, has been recognized by many MDAU staff as being the top technician across the state of Michigan. So please utilize his services as they are free and confidential. We are also making some improvements to the Kalamazoo Conservation District to increase our contribution to the Kalamazoo Master Plan. One of those is to include updating our mission statement. And our new mission statement is working with our community to protect, conserve, and restore the natural resources of Kalamazoo County. We are also working to expand our board by creating some associate board positions and in creating more community involvement in program development. We have also been working with a statewide collaborative organization called the Hunt Michigan Collaborative. This is aiding in providing natural resource management services such as wildlife management services to agriculture workers. So this is a service that we are able to now provide to farmers across Kalamazoo County to help them with any wildlife management issues they may be having. That is all the updates that I have for you right now, but of course, we do have a lot of other services and programs. So if you don't know much about us, I do encourage you to log on to our website, kalamazuconservation.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. There you go. Hi, there we go. My name is Barb Van Esseltine. I live at 7204 East Owen Avenue. That's in Pavilion Township. I feel compelled today to come before you to discuss the situation with phone and video calls at the jail. Jail persons are charged an exorbitant amount for phone and video, which goes to Fatten Kalamazoo County at about $1,000 a month. That is profit we make from jailed persons, their loved ones, and their families. The company that provides that service, Viapath, also makes a profit from these communications. Viapath collects a number of fees from persons who wish to use their services, in other words, people who wish to make a phone call. In addition to a permanent charge for phone calls and video calls, the fees include you have to pay to open a Viapath account. There's a fee to call persons who don't have a Viapath account. There's a fee to deposit money into your account. And then there's a fee when you wish to close your account and get your money back out again. This appears to be a well-established process for the number of companies who offer these kinds of services, so we selected Viapath. I do not believe that Kalamazoo County should profit from communications between jailed persons and their families and loved ones. At the worst, we should aim to break even. There's little doubt in my mind that we can do better than we are currently doing. We all want Kalamazoo to be a great place to live. We want to build Kalamazoo into the beloved community that the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. spoke about. The beloved community includes everyone. We should be focusing on how to reincorporate struggling persons back into our community, not on how to profit from them. Thanks to Now Kalamazoo for bringing this to my attention, and now I bring it to your attention. What are you going to do to remedy this situation? Thanks for your time and this opportunity to bring this to your attention and to ask you to do an investigation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barb.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is DJ Perry, and I serve as the Public Policy Manager for Maternal and Child Health at YWCA Kalamazoo. At YWCA Kalamazoo, our mission is to drive systemic change that eliminates racism, empowers women, and promotes peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all. We are deeply committed to the advancing of policies and the community initiatives that center the needs of families, especially those that are most marginalized. In 2024 alone, YWCA Kalamazoo had the pleasure of serving over 140 families consisting of over 180 children and our Improving the Lives of Children program. Today, I am here on behalf of those families and YWCA's childcare and early childhood education staff to uplift the need for meaningful and community-informed relief in the childcare sector. Across Michigan and Kalamazoo County, we are faced with a multitude of issues that plague the childcare system. Some of these issues include affordability, inequitable pay, quality of care, and even access to available facilities that can provide a safe and healthy environment for infants and toddlers. There are often few to no options for families requiring care during third shift, and there still exist barriers to accreditation and licensing preventing providers from receiving critical funding. And as a provider of childcare services, we at YWCA Kalamazoo often see additional stressors like burnout. As these issues plague the state of childcare in Michigan, retention levels for providers within the sector continue to drop, causing a snowball effect on larger providers like YWCA Kalamazoo. And as we anticipate increased need for childcare, we still provide low-to-no-barrier access to care. Access to various supports for families also continues to regress as the complexities of these issues are now layered with the funding changes from the federal government. As we have seen, many of the crucial services that are provided by the state and funded through the federal government have had the dispersing of already awarded funding paused while other agencies and programs are defunded altogether. Government funding is a critical lifeline, not only for providers like YWCA Kalamazoo, but also those vulnerable and marginalized families seeking care as well. In normal times, the state would step in to backfill these gaps to mitigate the effects of pulling funding that supports the pivotal lifelines that serve us our families across the state. However, our state budget for fiscal year 26 has deprioritized many supports for families. This puts our local communities at immediate risk, however, this also offers an opportunity to collaborate on innovative policies to address these gaps in care, strengthen our community, and make us more self-sufficient to survive future unpredictability. YWCA Kalamazoo stands at the forefront of the provision of care for our most vulnerable and marginalized families. We've approached this board for collaboration to address a myriad of issues facing our community and are here to do so again once today. As we continue to have these conversations surrounding these issues in childcare, we will remain steadfast in the belief that where the reach of the state and federal program ends, our community must step in with innovative local solutions. No family should be left behind regardless of race, religion, income, or family structure. And we look forward to working with you all in the very near future to ensure our community lives up to these values. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you, DJ. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? Administrator, is there anyone online?
There are no hands raised, Chair.
Thank you so much. All right, we will move to item three. This is a review of accounts payable and our payroll dispersments. And we'll welcome our Finance Director, Ryan Post. Welcome, Director.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Protem, Board of Commissioners. Corporate counsel, thank you. I have a lot of comments, but I'm going to refrain from that. We have an accounts payable claims list totaling $4,978,491.51 presented for review of this total. The Board of Commissioners is asked to approve claims totaling $4,296,821.51. Payroll dispersments totaling $4,480,625.91 are presented for the October 24th general and October 31st elected payrolls. Welcome. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners at this time?
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions? I'm seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move to item four. We'll hear on the 2024 Office of Medical Examiners Report. We'll welcome Dr. Patrick Hansma from the Office of the Medical Examiner and Department of Pathology. Welcome.
Thank you so very much. I will keep this very brief. It's a data-driven presentation that you all have before you. I've given you a printed copy. That's an excerpt of Kalamazoo County only from our larger annual report. So if you want to see Kalamazoo numbers relative to the other 13 counties that WMED serves, you can go on our website. It's very easy to find. WMED Medical Examiner Annual Report. Just Google that. You'll find it. And you can see how Kalamazoo compares to mortality statistics in other counties. But just to run you through this report very quickly. On the very first page is a summary of all the Kalamazoo County cases, and you're reading down that right margin is the 2024 numbers. Honestly, very little change from the year prior. There's not much to talk about. Last year, I stood before you and said what I'm seeing everywhere is a return to pre-COVID numbers, but could not really say whether things were going to continue to decline, whether they would stabilize, or whether they would go back up. And it has been a blend across all our counties so far. And as it is, total deaths in Kalamazoo County have declined slightly, but the deaths reported to the medical examiner have risen slightly. And then our responses to those, whether or not they need to come to WMED for a post-mortem exam, the extent of that post-mortem exam, highly variable across our various counties and in Kalamazoo, no different. Essentially, we're just kind of seeing noise in the data. One thing I will draw your attention to, fortunately, if you scroll down that right-hand column in that first table and you see the number 25 almost to the bottom, that's tissue donations. So that is number of successful donations out of the number right above it, which is referrals to Gift of Life, 302 referrals. You will notice those numbers keep going up, and so that is wonderful. We are getting referrals accomplished successfully within the window necessary to make referrals so procurement can happen and tissue and organ donations can proceed. So that's excellent. We're very happy about that. Table right below it is cremation permits. The vast majority of deaths that we encounter, the final remains are ultimately cremated. Now it's three quarters of deaths. That's the preferred method of disposition as opposed to burial. Cremation is very popular, so we are increasingly busy approving cremation permits to make sure that no non-natural deaths are slipping through the cracks prior to cremation without that death being investigated. So that keeps us very busy. The next page at the very top, manners of deaths reported in Kalamazoo, again, reading down that right-hand column. Vast majority of deaths are natural. The majority of deaths that the medical examiner investigates are natural because we don't know that they're natural until we have looked into them. And so fortunately, most of them are natural, accidents being the second most. Fortunately, homicides are near the bottom there. Then it's presented graphically in the middle of that page and below it, the deaths reported by age in Kalamazoo County. That table unfortunately due to a formatting error is split funny, so I would ask you to turn the page to see the 2024 numbers. Sorry about that. We are reading across the bottom row of that top table on page 45 now. And that's the distribution of deaths across the county. The vast majority are in those ages 65 and older. There were unfortunately and tragically several pediatric fatalities in Kalamazoo. The details of those are on the rest of that page. In the infants, we continue to see fatalities that are at least associated, if not due to potentially unsafe sleep situations. We just heard public comment about the YWCA and access to care, and I cannot stand here and correlate those two, but hopefully these are not happening due to impediments to resources. Hopefully, people are able to get the resources they need and that this is not a community lapse that is contributory to these infant fatalities. We know many things are systems issues, not individual issues tragically. Beyond that, I'll let you read through the details of those at your convenience. And that takes us to the top of page 46. That very top table doesn't tell you very much, but what it tells you is crucial that the infant deaths that our office certified, 100% of them are autopsied. So they are certified with a high degree of confidence, which is very good because not every county in the state of Michigan can claim that. Fortunately, you are served by boards certified forensic pathologists, so infant mortality receives a very in-depth investigation, including full autopsy. Accidental deaths are the next table. You're reading down the right column there. It's the 2024 numbers. Motor vehicles and drug-related fatalities are always at the top. And falls in the elderly. You'll see 112 deaths due to falls. These are mostly the elderly. Grandma or grandpa falls, fractures a hip, never recovers. These are not falls from heights. And then below that are the drug-related fatalities broken down by manner of death. Most are by convention certified as accident. Approximately one-tenth of that were suicidal. And then that's graphically represented on the next page. And then below that is a table of the suicides by age in Kalamazoo County. And 2024 is across that bottom row. Tragically, there were three pediatric suicides in Kalamazoo County, as well as five in young adults. It's something we typically more expect to see in adults and older adults, but there were some younger suicides that clustered in Kalamazoo County last year. And then that takes you to the very last page, the mechanisms of suicides. Firearms and hangings are often the most common to just essentially due to ease of access. And then carbon monoxide toxicity, often by motor vehicle or generator exhaust in an enclosed space, and then drug intoxication as well are the major players. And then below that are the homicides by mechanism. Firearms, often the most common and no different here in Kalamazoo. And then blunt force and sharp force trauma, slightly less common. Essentially, Kalamazoo numbers resemble those of the rest of the state and the nation at large. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
There are questions? Commissioner Gisler?
Thank you, Chair. This, I don't think you covered specifically, but you probably have a better handle on it than anybody here. It's been a, since I've been on the county commission, there has been an issue with racial diversities and number of infant deaths. And we always look like we're almost Detroit, which I tend to think of as the bottom of the barrel in terms of infant mortality. And yet our black kids, little kids, infants, seem to be dying at an inordinate rate. Do you have any feel for that?
Not exactly. Because I'm not an epidemiologist, and so I can't give you great answers. But what I can say is that, and I'm not a historian, but I can say that it's my observation that infant mortality tends to associate with socioeconomic status. And due to the history of this country, that unfortunately has a fairly overlapping Venn diagram of race and socioeconomic status. And so high proportion of minorities falling into a lower socioeconomic status. And so it's my personal observation that higher number of black infants dying, not because they're black infants, but because they fell to that socioeconomic group. And therefore, I hate to say coincident because it's not coincident. There's a history there. But by history, black infants in that group and therefore a higher mortality rate. I did work in Detroit for a time, and your observation is not invalid. There is, again, my personal observation, not data, just observation, I think something of a culture of, what's the word I'm looking for? I think criticism and skepticism for the healthcare community in large cities with a large, lower socioeconomic base. And so places like Detroit, there are a lot of people that are not interested in accessing care because they don't fear, they fear that they're not going to get the care that they need and therefore don't go at all. Again, that's not data. It's just my personal observation, having worked there and here and many places elsewhere. I hope that answers your question. I know it's not satisfying, but I hope it's an answer.
Yeah, it basically talks about scope beyond just Kalamazoo County. And my concern is Kalamazoo County seems to be worse than it ought to be. And I guess that's just going to remain bothersome unless somebody like you, Chair, has some inside ideas on why that's the case.
Let me, maybe I'll speak to that, but I'll have a, let me go, I think Commissioner Morales, and then we'll go to Vice Chair. And we'll continue to, Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this data as well. I will ask you because you are a professional, and the data that I've researched with a lot of BIPOC doctors, socioeconomic status is a part of it, but structural racism is a part of it as well.
Oh, sure.
I need you to, I would really appreciate if you would put that into play as well. When we talk about Detroit, I don't think they're the bottom of the barrel. I think that structurally, they've been impacted by the lack of healthcare given to specifically black women. We look at whether a black woman is facing financial turmoil, or if she's a middle-class woman like myself, the death rates are parallel. And so when we look at that, and also put up some information that supports that, it shows that we're more likely to die than those of white poor women. So when we bring this to this public sector like this, and people are hearing this, some people will only hear one thing, only poor black people that are suffering based on their socioeconomic status. This is happening to them. And if we're going to keep data, data, and I understand, I feel life experiences. I do consulting through life experiences, but when we're talking about something as sensitive as this, I need all the data to support why we're one dying, one that racism is still playing a crucial part and the success of black and brown women having successful pregnancies, one infant mortality rates, and living themselves. So thank you, Chair. I really wanted to bring that to the table.
Thank you, Commissioner Morales.
If I may.
Go ahead.
All those points absolutely valid, and I just want to say I wasn't trying to pigeonhole this into a single thing. I was just trying to not abuse the commission's time with something that I, that I don't know enough about, that I would go into rambling if I were talking about systemic racism because I'm not a sociologist. I would just, I'm rambling now. So I was trying to give a succinct answer, but it is absolutely multifactorial. There's no doubt about that, and that is absolutely a factor. And bringing it to the floor for public hearing is absolutely correct, no doubt about it. So thank you.
And in fact, that systemic racism is a significant contributor. Vice Chair.
Thank you. I just want to emphasize Commissioner Morales's point. The data shows that African-American women with a PhD that make over $100,000 a year have more chance of maternal death than a poor white woman that's making $30,000 a year. So the socioeconomic factors don't ring true. As far as looking at just the numbers and not, not looking at it from any sort of perspective one way or the other, but just looking at it from math, it is a testament to systemic racism. And I really appreciate the comment by Commissioner Gisler because I think that is the epitome as we look at infant mortality, what's going on with our funding for some of our WIC programs, some of our maternal health programs within the county. How are we going to turn the tide to that obvious systemic racism? And you know, math has got to be a big part of that, that future, but I really appreciate your comments, Commissioner Morales.
Thank you. I'm going to follow into this dialogue, and then I have some additional questions to address as well. But I think it's important for community and often with our medical community, when we think about what is systemic racism, we have, you know, multiple systems at play. But when we speak about the impacts in, within medical care, for example, it was very common until just not long ago that if you were a black African-American person and you're being evaluated for kidney function, the actual diagnostic criteria was based on racist assumptions that black people had stronger kidneys than white people. And so your blood levels would have to demonstrate a much higher level of risk until you were referred for care for kidney disease. That was how it was, the actual algorithm that medical professionals use to evaluate that among many other conditions was pervasive endemic, actually written into curriculum and taught to healthcare professionals until just two years ago. And lo and behold, there's a higher rate of kidney disease in the African-American community, but they have a higher barrier to get into access of care. So another misnomer within the medical profession, and this is borne out in analysis when they survey medical students, there's a misnomer that, again, African-American people have a higher pain tolerance. So be much more likely for a mother in labor to be expressing, I'm in pain. I don't feel right. And for that not to be attended to by healthcare professionals. There's a number of studies that weigh that out and understand those systems at play. So when we talk, it's not just like a bad person making a bad decision. It's the way that the structure is built, the way the curriculums are designed, the way our laws are enacted, or our programs are funded, like we're going to lose funding for our WIC programming and infant maternal health in our community. And we're going to see then what happens because of that. So I'm sorry there, but just since we're speaking on that, one of the things I really appreciated in your report, right at the outset of the lengthy report, is a concept I had never I had never really understood the gravity of, that the medical examiner's office is really preventive medicine. And can you speak to that a little bit, it was in the foreword of the report? How is, when we look at when people have died, how is that preventive medicine? And how do we use that dialogue to drive that agenda?
Yeah, so, the autopsy is a retrospective diagnostic study, and it is, I think, very easy to fall into the trap that you're autopsying this individual for the sake of that individual, but that's not the purpose. The medical examiner's office is intended to be a public health office. We are doing these investigations on these deaths to ascertain if there is a public health threat. So, we cannot prevent anything for that person who's already deceased, right? That's, that ship has sailed tragically, and so therefore, is there something here that we need to know about? Whether it is an emerging disease like COVID-19 five years ago, was it the mere presence of someone who was homicidal in the community? That both of those are public health threats. And so, if we recognize something that is actually a homicide, that did not appear to be so, we can alert law enforcement and say, "This death is suspicious and needs to be investigated." So, there's a lot of ways that it can be viewed as preventive medicine. I'm tempted to continue the conversation on pediatric mortality, but we'll be here all night. I'll dig myself into a hole. But this data is intended to serve that purpose, you know, and it's not all captured here, of course, in the numbers. I just presented on the history of forensic medicine at the National Association of Medical Examiners Conference in Louisville, Kentucky, a couple of weeks ago, and tried to make the point that history is not in the textbooks or the articles where we do the research. And, and public health, these are numbers, and that's great, but when you get down to it, there's a very human side of this that never really gets captured for the rest of the world to see. Again, I don't want this to go all night, but my statement about casual observation about socioeconomic statuses, because if you reviewed the case files on these pediatric cases and saw the homes we responded to, it is exquisitely rare for us to respond to an economically affluent home for a pediatric fatality, very rare. So, it's not in the numbers, but it's my observation. So, a lot of it is, I think, actually probably lost, and as preventive as we want to be, the public can't access all of it. Now I'm rambling.
That's all right.
Again, I'm sorry.
Well, and I just appreciated that perspective shared within the report, and one of the things that I helped participate in, in our region of the state, in the public mental behavioral health system, we review sentinel events that occur for beneficiaries. And so, when we have an individual receiving mental health services, and they die of a homicide, or they die of suicide, regionally, we collectively review the case, we do a review of the medical notes we talked through, and we problem solve systemically, were there places that we could have made adjustments, so that we evaluate and use that as a preventative measure in the future? So, do you have opportunity in the review of the data to then dig into dialogue like that with providers, practitioners, or, you know, like you spoke at the conference, where are the other avenues that you can share the insights?
Yeah, it's usually happening in real time with each case that comes, we're looking for opportunities, say, "Who treated this person? What was their access to care? Was APS involved or CPS?" And, and give feedback back to them, saying, you know, "We've, we've got this situation, and lo and behold, you closed your case six months ago, they had made necessary improvements, and you closed your case, and six months later, this person is dead of the same situation that got you involved in the first place, you know? Does, does this mean that your agency needs to continue contact with these people longer?" You know, things like that. Oh gosh. I look for opportunities to give autopsy reports to treating clinicians, if available, if I'm reviewing medical records, and I see, okay, I uncovered something that I don't think they recognized based on reading the notes. I look for who that clinician was, and if I can find their email, I shoot them the autopsy report, just saying, "Hey, heads up, it looks like maybe you didn't see this on your laparotomy" or whatever. I have no idea if it makes a dent, but I try. You know, so it's, it's usually happening in real time.
Thank you for that. Then, one other thing, as we're looking at the suicides by age, and it looks better in this data, in these data than I'd expected to see, but I found it also enlightening to learn the rate of suicide prevalence among older adults in the community. And that looks like it's been on the decline, which is a wonderful thing, but looking at people over the age of 45, in, you know, 22, 23, I mean, that was the, some of the highest rate of suicide, particularly in 2022. So, it looks like that's improving, which is good. And I just elevate that, I mean, obviously every suicide is a tragic circumstance, and there are many reasons that drive people to suicidal ideation. Sometimes that is chronic debilitating mental health condition, it is also sometimes chronic debilitating pain. Suffering is just great for some people, and loneliness is great. So, those are just things for us to, you know, absorb and be aware of, as we're thinking about all the threats to the programming coming, and what are our values, and who do we protect, and how do we do that?
Mental health that you point to is an extremely difficult thing to capture in this type of data, very, getting back to that point of what's in the numbers versus what you see. And, and it's extremely difficult, because once they are deceased, it's very difficult for us to know what their ideation, their intentions, their mental and emotional state was at the moment of their death. It can be very challenging to ascertain even whether a death is a suicide, if it's intoxication, did they go to their favorite recreational drug again? Or did they actually follow through with their threats that they made to their girlfriend two days ago on the phone, for example, that they're going to end, and they did so, buy their favorite recreational drug? Very difficult to capture the, the influence of mental health in suicides. We know it's there, but quantifying it, very difficult.
Right, right. Dr. Hansma, I just want to thank you, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you Chair, yeah, this one's easy, I think. Easier than, than the ones you've been dealing with. Do you provide, does your office provide service to any of the northern counties in Indiana that was occasionally something that came up in the past? Is that still the case?
Uh, yeah, St. Joseph County, Indiana, their coroner will send us cases for autopsies when they need it, and then Elkhart County, Indiana, much, much less so, but every once in a while will send us a case if they need an autopsy. Yep.
So, you go far beyond just the 16 counties in Michigan?
Well, it's not far, they're just across the border, but yes, we are, we are present in that regard in Indiana, and, and our pathologists do have to go down to South Bend, for example, to testify on cases occasionally, so.
How many pathologists, if you'll humor me, do you have on your staff?
Presently, there are five of us. We need seven.
Thanks.
If you know anybody.
All right, I'm seeing no others, so, Dr. Hansma, I want to thank you for taking the time for the report. I think we all find this very interesting, when we receive it and review it each year. And for your services, it's both important and somber and technical work, and we appreciate the value that provides to the community and to families and all, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. You got to wake that back up for me. We're on a computer sleep struggle, and I'm borrowing Commissioner Hepler's laptop, which I will need, we're going to move into item number five, discussion on our community grant applications. And so, as he's bringing that forward, so, we've had, again, just to reorient us, we've had a number of discussions, really beginning back as far back as our, our budget retreat earlier in the year, community came forward in request of resources from up to $400,000 pool of funds for our community grants. We received an initial and finalized recommendation from administration, which is still included in our materials, and then commissioners individually scored the items as well, and rated those, and then sent their ratings back to administration, which have been collated for us and made a little easier to read for this evening. And now we need to really finalize the recommendations. So, I do have some thoughts, but I'll open up if there's any particular items that commissioners are seeing concern with, or want to elevate for prioritization, and then we'll move forward from there. Commissioner DeLu.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I, of course, want to elevate Ashton Mo Township, I think is pretty much supported here, but, and I'm never going to call the youth sports complex a curse, but the traffic associated with the youth sports complex could be a curse, it's pretty bad out there on the west side already. And they, they have already commissioned their own study and paid for part of it, but they, they did that before they realized they were getting the youth sports complex, so this would greatly assist them in seeing what they could do to handle their traffic. I would also like to bring up something I think Vice Chair Taylor brought up, is I think it'd be nice to support all the local townships. We had requests from Schoolcraft, Parchment, and Texas Township, the three of them together are just a little over $100,000. I know Schoolcraft has kind of made the top 10, so to speak, but I'd also like to see money going to Texas and Parchment. I know the YWCA wasn't on our top 10, but after realizing what they do for this community in their presentation tonight, you know, I always give more credence to people that actually show up, and just submitting maybe some paperwork, but, you know, and I know we can't please everybody, just throwing out another option to think about is, even if we added more money to the, we're already at 451, if we added more, we could give everybody a certain percentage, as opposed to just funding so many at 100%. So, that's just an option as well, but my, my choices right now are certainly the School, or the township requests.
Thank you Commissioner DeLu. I guess I'll, I'll make just one observation about the scoring from commissioners, and then I'll advance further to comments from my colleagues, but really if you, the grid that we've received with the scoring from commissioners, if you look at all of the items that have received the most support, not all majority support, but from at least three commissioners or more, and we have about $550,000 of funding there. Now, so I'll lay that out there, with the reduction of one or more of those items, we could come into more alignment. I will share again, as I did last time, there is an item with the support from three commissioners for guardian finance and advocacy services, and that was for $38,000. And again, this was for legal guardianship for people under the age of 65, those are primarily going to be individuals with developmental disabilities and mental illness, and it is really a state initiative to reduce the number of those types of legal relationships, because we, we do it at a far greater rate than the rest of the country does. And there are other mechanisms to protect vulnerable people, besides taking all of their decision-making rights. So, I would recommend we not move that one forward, and potentially move some of that funding to Mothers of Hope instead. So, I was going to listen before I talked much about that, I'm going to go to Vice Chair, and then I'll go to Commissioner Morales.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the work that went into this, I know this is, this is, it's a lot of work to go through all of that. I agree with a lot of what Commissioner DeLu said, specifically around municipalities. My, one of my big ones that I liked was the United Way, because it was for tax preparation, for ALs population, it was so that they could get the refunds that were owed to them by the federal government, and get it back into the community. So, I looked at it as both, you know, revenue generating thing to get money back into the community, however, that did not score well. And I do understand Chair Strebs, and I agree with her, the, everything that I was, what I was originally going to propose was everything that got four or higher, and then the threes that were recommended by the administrator, so we would take away the $50,000 that got a two, the $250,000 that got twos, and then include the city of Parchment, that would generate about $28,000, $27,000, that would help sort of get us close to that $400,000 level. I appreciate the Chair's comments about the guardian finance advocacy services, because I don't know a whole lot about that, and I'm sure she knows a heck of a lot more about that than I do, but if she's, she'd rather take that $38,000 and go towards a smaller donation to the Mothers of Hope, I certainly don't have a problem with that. But I, I would, I would sort of recommend us taking the, I think it's Disability Network Southwest and the Urban Alliance, and put that towards the city of Parchment and Mothers of Hope, but that would be my, sort of my, my two cents on that.
Vice Chair, will you just say the last part of that recommendation again, so I make sure you understood?
So, well, my original one, before listening to you, was to just take the Urban Alliance and the Disability Southwest Michigan, and then include, include the city of Parchment, that would save us about $26,000, and I think we were at 438 out of a 400 expenditure, so we'd have 12 to come up with roughly, if we were to do that. But you had mentioned the guardian, guardian finance advocacy services, that was currently at $38,000, and then another group that did get three votes as well was Mothers of Hope. I would be comfortable with that. I guess I'm comfortable following the order of number of supporters from commissioners, I think that that should be the, the sort of goal, and if we're going to give it to a three, I think we should fund all fours higher, and then the conversation should really be about what we do with the money for the threes.
Thank you. And that, that last suggestion, if Vice Chair was in alignment, moving money from guardian advocacy to Mothers of Hope, I think that gets us to $397,000, if my math ended up correct. Commissioner Morales, are you good to?
Kinda, so, I do think my time on this board, we have, I feel, at this point, that we really neglected some of our villages and townships when they're coming to ask for money. Some of it is a lot, but I think we should be able to support them a little more. But two, and shoot, I lost my, my screen, doing some IT work over here, I lost my screen. Two, I, I think that flushing money into bigger entities is fine, but we forget about the grassroots organizations that are really doing the work to help people get to the finish line. So, the fact like, being out broken and get funded, Mothers of Hope, like, we're scouring to find funds for them, and some other projects, even when we look at other areas and housing, I'm becoming, I'm beginning to become very disappointed in how we allocate those dollars. And the allocations that are being pushed forward is really flushing out our most vulnerable people, even though these bigger entities are like, "No, we're here to service those folks," but when you look at the data, the, the most vulnerable people still aren't using those services. So, I personally, as we move forward, would like to see more money flushed into grassroots organizations. I think we spend a lot of money on outside resources to manage things that they have a hard time managing in their everyday operations. So, I just want us to think about that as he fixes this. I think Mothers of Hope deserves more than $30,000. I don't know, I'm not familiar with the entity that you're asking to delete, I'm in support of deleting them, and flushing dollars where we know the most impact is gonna, gonna happen for our community. Sorry, I'm rambling.
That's okay, and I know you're trying to multitask too, as we're.
I am, because a lot of my stuff that I want to talk about is.
So, I just want to make sure I'm in alignment with the discussion so far, and then I'll go to Commissioner Ray. The, you know, this sort of moving some money from guardian finance to Mothers of Hope, what that does too, it gets us, one, two, three, seven of the nine. What that does too, it gets us, one, two, three, seven of the nine organizations recommended by administration. And then I believe it covers each of the municipal government requests as well. Is that correct?
Except for Texas.
Except for Texas Township. Okay. Commissioner Morales.
I'm sorry. And I mean, like, we have, even though we're cutting funding from different spaces, I I support Griffin Place. But I mean, is that, was that their maximum? I remember it was something like that when they came about a year ago and asked us. Some of their services are duplicative. So if we have to cut some from there, this is like the 211 and all that, or 311 for them. Okay, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. And that was, I just had responded to Commissioner Morales. That was not one funded.
I was looking at something.
Yeah, that's okay. But just so they could hear what I said. And Commissioner Ray.
Thank you Chair. I didn't hear Commissioner DeLu's comments, but I do agree with the recommendations. I guess my question would just be for Mothers of Hope. If we change that and then allocate the funding there, it would be like 29,824. Is that enough to do what they said they were going to do when they requested 150,000? Do you want to ask that question first and then also have them submit the documentation that wasn't sufficient? Which is why they weren't recommended in the first place? And then my second question, when I looked at the grant application for Charlie's Place, their request was 100,000? And I see it on here at 50,000? So is 50,000 enough for them to do the programs that they proposed? I just want to ask those questions before we do those allocations.
Thank you for clarifying. And those are, the suggestions on Mothers of Hope are good. I think that would have been something I would have suggested to just the receipt of the budget of what will be done with the money and the willingness to accept the the reduction. I don't know if our our human calculator or an actual calculator. I think if we add up the items, the lines aren't numbered here, but down through the allocation initially suggested for Guardian Finance and Advocacy takes it to 397 and change, I thought. So if we move that to Mothers of Hope, they would get 38,000. And then we could do the difference to bring us to four. So they get about 40,000-ish, I think would be the proposal. But somebody better with numbers could check those for me. Administration, to Commissioner Ray's question on Charlie's Place request, can we clarify if 100,000 was sought from that organization? Okay. I mean, not that I, I'm just, maybe there was like a communication that occurred that we're missing or something like that. So no doubt that Commissioner was diligent.
Yeah, Chair, it does appear that they requested 100,000. Our management analysts must have.
Okay.
Must have been inscrubbers there. So yeah, they requested 100. So we would have to reach out to them at this point to see if they could utilize a $50,000 balance.
Which could also change our approach. You know, we could have discussion whether we want to fund them at the requested 100,000 and reduce the number of organizations overall which receive funding. Or if we want to move forward with the recommendation, sort of sounds like we're leaning on, provided that there is a agreement from both Charlie's Place and Mothers of Hope that a reduced allocation is, you know, workable for them. I'm up to Vice Chair.
Okay, so what I've got is if we going through this, and most of these are administrative recommendations as well. But the WM Western Medicine, the Ashtemo Charter Township, Village of Schoolcraft, Local Journalism of Kalamazoo County. City, I've got the City of Parchment, Senior Services of Southwest Michigan, the Girl Scouts of Michigan. And that adds up to 272, which would leave Mothers of Hope with 128.
It looks like Vice Chair, you missed Charlie's Place, Cares, and the First Issue Fund.
Charlie's Place was not recommended on the on the one I'm looking at.
No, not just the Administrator's recommendations.
Oh, okay.
But the number of Commissioner's supports, yes.
Okay.
So all items with a three or greater, so that's from Mothers of Hope up on our, can we?
Then Chair, Commissioner Ray is correct. It would leave about $28,000 for Mothers of Hope, or 23,000, I'm sorry. 29,824. Yeah, that's about right. It would be under $30,000.
Unless we move the allocation from Guardian Finance, which is 38,000.
I'm I'm not including that.
With moving that?
Yes.
If we move 38, how do they end up with less than 38 then? I'm so confused.
Because of the Administrator's initial recommendations, we didn't have Charlie's Place, Community AIDS Resource Education Service, and First Issue Fund, which received three votes, but we didn't have that.
I I didn't want to, I did use the old calculator and a couple buttons were stuck. But I got 370,176.
And I just added the numbers and did not do the fractions and it was pretty close to that. That includes adding Parchment, but not Texas, correct?
That's okay. Commissioner Morales.
May I address DeLu? How much is 23?
For which one? For Texas? Of the two requests from Texas, what would be the preference of the board if we choose to honor one? Which would be the priority among the two of them? Hearing commentary that the trail.
It's the trailway repaving enhancement. The other one's 22,750 for continuous community engagement.
So I and I apologize if I'm missing requests to join into the the dialogue. So when I've, I just went through, if I looked at WMed, Ashtemo, Charter Township, Village of Schoolcraft, Local Journalism, City of Parchment, Senior Services, Charlie's Place, Cares, First Issue Fund, Girl Scouts of Michigan, and Guardian and Financial Advocacy Services. I locked your phone in the calculator up now. That came to 370,000? Again, I am.
Chair, did you say Girl Scouts as well?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. So the total, I have the Excel sheet open. It's easier.
Thank you so much.
So yes, that is, that's 370,176.
Thank you. So then we'd have 30,000 left to allocate. You included the Guardian Finance in that total?
I did not.
Okay. Thank you. So with it included, that took us to, that would have been 408,000. There we go. I knew something was like about 7,000. My apologies. Okay. I know, I know she's got it. I'm just trying to make myself understand what's going on. Okay. All right. So if we go to through to the Girl Scouts, we have 370. So yeah, we have 30K. Are we in agreement to that point? We need to dialogue around what to do with the initial, the final 30,000. Let me go to Commissioner Ray.
So I am in agreeance to that point. But if we want to add Texas Township and we're reducing folks and not giving the full amount to, you know, smaller grassroots bi-poc organizations. We can look at the City of Parchment and just grant them 50,000. Now we're free of 13,000 to go towards the Texas Township and then we can find another $10,000.
So there's a proposal from Commissioner Ray. Are you advocating for that? Are you comfortable with it? Okay. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I, so I probably, so we get this right and we can probably write down a motion and give it to John. So he, it's there. But so we're on the the same page. Everything that scores a three or higher, we will do, we will do one of the Texas Township positions, but we're going to lower the Parchment from 73,150 to 50. So that will cover the Texas Township portion, the trailway portion of that part of it. And so all municipalities will at least be partially granted funds. And then that would still leave about $30,000 for Mothers of Hope allocation. And remove Guardian Finance. Okay, I I'm good with that.
Well, we did it. Look at that. Teamwork. We did math. I love it. That's good. Okay. Any other? Good. Administrator, uh-oh.
Yes, no, I appreciate it Chair. I just want to make sure. So I just want to repeat this, just so we can have it written down for, we already have a motion crafted for the regular meeting. We don't need to make any decision or at least at least vote on it now. But I want to make sure, so we have WMed, we have Ashtemo Township, Village of Schoolcraft, the Local Journalism, City of Parchment, but not their full request. Now we're reducing it by 13,000? Oh, sorry. Oh, to 50,000, okay. It's reducing. I'm just making a note for myself so we can get this right to 50,000. Okay. And then moving on, so I have Senior Services, Charlie's Place at 50,000, although they requested 100. I did review their budget really quickly and it looks like most of their line items were within like, they they labeled it as capital. So I think they really could leverage the $50,000 essentially to 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 program. They they'll just omit certain things that they wanted to do. But I have Cares and then First Issue Fund, Girl Scouts. Then I have Mothers of Hope with the balanced leverage from the City of Parchment request. So there's be about 23,000. Okay, what what would? 29,824. Oh, okay, right, right, that's fair. 29,824, fair enough. Yes, that's, okay, so I have that. And then I have the the Texas Charter Township. Their submission one, the request, I believe is 23,000. I'm sorry, submission two, 23,000. Yes, there we go. Which would be the 23,000 we took from Parchment's request. Okay, perfect. We're we're in shape. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you Administrator. Vice Chair Pro Tem.
Thank you Chair. I'm in support of all these things that you guys have proposed. I think it's fair, but I'm hoping that we will get a report back on what progress these grants made. I mentioned it in our last meeting. When we're giving out grants, we should be getting some metrics back as to was the thing that they were proposing successful or was it not? And how successful was it? Not, I don't want to make it complex for them, but we should be getting something back that tells us what this grant did for the community. And it seems like we're always putting money out, we never hear back. Did we, were we successful? Did we do anything? Thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair Pro Tem. Administrator, would you be able to speak to how we will garner the level of service provided by the, from the grantees back to the board?
Absolutely Chair. So what we can do when we draft up the agreements, we can stipulate that they are to report out on progress either on a quarterly basis or at the time in which they expend all the funds. So we can say, you know, your final reports due within 30 days of final drawdown from the from the grant, something like that. But the board can sort of, we can require any sort of reporting requirements we'd like to stipulate at this time.
Thank you Administrator. Vice Chair.
Also, I completely agree with Commissioner Hepler, but also if we could say that if they don't spend it within a year, that it's returned as well, because I'd hate to see that money dangling out there year after year after year if nobody's going to spend it. Not everybody's as nice to say, hey, we can't, we can't spend this, we're giving it back. Some people just keep it there.
Good. Right. Thank you very much Administrator. Commissioner Kissler.
Yes, only to save administration possible headaches and time. Whatever else, I will repeat what I said, I think, at the last meeting, and that is touch base if you feel like it to Cassie Bailey, who did such a wonderful job coming up with the pros and cons and the success or lack thereof for people involved with the area agency on aging. She did that beautifully and we started out with, I don't know how many, but it was a, it was a lot of books to juggle and she might be able to give you some guidance or some help as to how to go about, you know, getting responses back and answering Vice Chair Pro Tem questions that you had. Don't buy your teeth through Amazon. It's not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners. Anything?
Chair, if I may.
Yes.
It's just a really, just a really quick question for the Commission. I want to ensure that we're on the same page when we're drafting the agreements. So that they don't have to come back to the board for approval. We intend to authorize, like we did last year with when we gave, when the board awarded funding to like KDCC, YWCA and such, they authorized the Administrator to sign those approved to form by Corporation Council. What I want to ensure is that the funding gets dispersed as you desire. Does the Commission desire that these funds be reimbursed, so they're drawn down on a reimbursement basis? Or that we give it, we provide it to the grantees upfront and also?
Thank you for that, that question. Vice Chair.
My preference, strong, strong preference would be a reimbursement base for services. We're good for it. If they give us a receipt, I think we pay it immediately. But I I I think you get into trouble when you you don't do a reimbursement basis as a governmental entity. Because if something, act of God or something happens that they're no, they're not able to provide that service and they've already received the dollars, then it could get really dicey.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ray, then Commissioner Morales.
Well, I'm always going to argue against that because in my opinion, it's an equity equity issue. And not everybody has the money upfront. So I think it should be, we're given the money, we have a contract at the end of the year, whatever that is. We ask for the supporting documentation and final report. And if they haven't expended all the funds, give it back.
Commissioner Morales?
She said it. And yeah. Also, because we came into a pickle with an entity that didn't know they needed to invoice. It was their first time receiving funds, so it did sit for a year. So just when we're communicating that to make, and it could have been communicated and fell through the cracks, but I got a call like, did y'all pay us? I was like, yeah. And Kevin was like, no, we didn't. I was like, oh, shoot, you know. So that piece, and it is an equity issue. And and I'm seeing it even when we voted on Miller, I think it was Miller and Elite. You know, and that company, and I I can't think of it, that was their name, but that company was trying to come up from grassroots and was like, no, we want this done now. And you can't compete like that if nobody ever gives you a chance. So sometimes you have to have some funding in place, do the right thing. And as Pro Tem Hepler said, give us the data back. And if you can't, then give us our money back. And if you can't do that, then we'll see you in court. So, you know, and hopefully we don't have to do that because I've seen entities just disappear and and we never collect stuff. So I, again, as I always say, I want to be consistent about this, but I don't want to go on a, you give me a receipt basis, because then a lot of things won't get done on a grassroots level.
Thank you. So hearing the feedback, I would agree with the colleagues to my left here. The, but maybe there's a compromise between those two things. Maybe the the standard contract is proposed forward on a reimbursement basis. And if the entity, I would like to request the dispersment upfront, that is a clause that they may request so within the contract. And so that allow organizations that do have, you know, difficulty launching the programming. And then as far as reporting, for me, I don't want to see folks bogged down with like quarterly reporting. I think for me, an annual report or a report at the end of the, well, it would be annual. Because we'll ask for it to be expended within a year is sufficient back to the board. because we'll ask for it to be expended within a year is sufficient, uh, back to the Board if that's, uh, in alignment with the rest of the Board, okay. Good, do you have direction that you?
Absolutely, so, um, we will incorporate that language and Corporation Council can certainly see that that gets, uh, incorporated. And, uh, what we'll do probably if, you know, as we kind of go on throughout the year, we can sort of require them maybe even on a quarterly basis to submit supporting documentation, at least so we can see that they are spending the money, that that way we know in terms of for the Board, uh, you know, fiduciary responsibilities, they know that, uh, funding is being spent uh, timely, so that way you know what funding may have to come back, uh, by the end of the year, if any. So we can incorporate some of that language too, and then, uh, work with the applicants, uh, to hopefully disperse funding towards the mid to end of January next year, so, yep.
All right, I think we kicked that one around. We hugged it, loved it and got it done, so good. Okay, thank you Commissioners. Uh, let's go next, we're going to item six. The first is a discussion, um, consideration to use some ARPA funding that we had identified for housing supportive services uh, to, uh, secure, to get secured locked storage at Ministry with Community on the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. So, uh, I've asked this, uh, to come forward. Um, we had the Continuum of Care is engaged in their strategic planning process and I'd attended one of the sessions, I, I attended a few of them. But one of them was, uh, with other municipal governments, and there wasn't many of us there. Um, but as we were having that discussion, among them, uh, came up again, and I heard this discussed at the City of Kalamazoo a number of times, was the need for storage. And we were, we were talking around, um, the stigma, stigmatization of people who are unhoused in the community. And tensions that exist, uh, with the business community, and often, uh, it's the presence of all of the items that the unhoused are struggling to carry with them everywhere that caused tension on the sidewalks and in the community. Beyond the personal struggles that it causes for the individual, the physical labor to carry all of your belongings everywhere, the risk that your items are robbed or stolen, which is a, a common issue that occurs, and a reason why many of our unhoused community members come back to the County ID Program over and over because they're continually losing their items, losing their documents, um, they're stolen or they're destroyed. And so these funds, what they would do, uh, while it's not an ultimate solution, it is a quickly deployable option for the unhoused to have a secure locker in which they can store their, all of their belongings. Um, Ministry of Community has articulated, they'd be willing to provide the physical space. These, they would be outside, um, and we could deploy these, and if it's not working or it needs to be changed, could be reevaluated. So that's the gist of how it comes forward, and I see Commissioner Morales.
Thank you Chair, and I would support this. I have, uh, some students facing housing insecurities at the college. And a lot of times they were going to Ministry and Community, and one of them specifically is in our engineering program. And so they had tools and all that kind of things, but couldn't be let into the building. Like I can't leave myself outside, and then they got dismissed from being able, being able to even go there. So I think, you know, it's one thing to be like, okay, people are putting their stuff in there, but there are people out there trying to do better. Today I had a student who was unhoused, living in a tent, lost her bus pass. And so I think this would be a great addition to have folks, hopefully they can go back and forth and get what they need, and it's not just someone. I'm not going to put a staple on that, never mind. Hopefully this works out, but I am supporting this because I do have, um, a high population of unhoused students that are trying to attain their degree and they have nowhere to put their books, their papers, they're staying at the college from nine and well, when we open at eight to nine at night, it's about to get cold, it's about to snow on Sunday, and I just want to make sure that they have a safe place to put their things. So I do support this, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. I see Commissioner Ray and then Vice Chair.
Thank you Chair. Um, I also support this idea. Um, I guess it's just not informational how many storage, uh, or lockers this will provide, and then also is this ARPA supportive of service dollars, or is this from the Housing Millage Supportive Service Dollars?
They are ARPA funds that did not get expended, um, so they are existing ARPA funds.
Okay, so is there like not a process to request them? Should people just come to Commissioners and ask for things? Um, and then also the four hundred thousand that we just allocated for housing to the Continuum of Care, seeing that this came from a session at the Continuum of Care, uh, Ministry with Community was one of the people who received those dollars, like this couldn't go on that, like?
Let me, just to clarify, so it was a session convened by the Continuum of Care, but the, uh, agency that they had come in to facilitate was there, there were not like Continuum of Care other employees there, so it wasn't a request from them or a request from Ministry with Community. It was just among, it was really the City of Kalamazoo and the County of Kalamazoo there. Uh, so Deputy, um, City Manager Laura Lamb, Housing Director Balkama, Planning Director Grover and myself were in this dialogue. And, uh, it was just in that discussion that the need for secure, uh, storage came back up again. And Director Balkama identified how we did have supportive services dollars that the Board had identified for housing supportive services, which this would be within that description. Uh, in ARPA, uh, still had not been expended, that we could utilize it. So I don't know if that exactly answers?
How many lockers will this support, and is that enough? Will a tent fit in there? Will a suitcase fit in there? Like what bits in the locker?
Yeah, thank you. The, so I don't know if, oh, thank you Administrator, I think yes, the detail's good.
Oh, of course, yeah Chair, uh, Vice, uh, Commissioner Ray, so the estimate right now, it's fifty lockers for fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars. It's an estimate and we're told that the number, uh, may change slightly, but right now the budget is fifteen thousand dollars for fifty lockers. In terms of the other questions, uh, as far as capacity, I, I just, we don't know that at this time, but we can, uh, obtain some information hopefully within the break.
The way to describe the lot, they're really basically like a Herbie Kirbys. You know, they'll be, uh, secured, they'll be lockable with a double key, so they hold so many yards. It's not like a metal locker. Um, and so I don't know, uh, maybe Administrator could find out, there may be a size that we've priced uh, for how much, uh, that is holding. Um, but this is a initiative, it's utilized this way in, in other communities. I don't think fifty is enough, but this was money that we had sort of like, it's quick to deploy. And so we could evaluate how effective it is and get feedback from folks who utilize it to see if we want to expand it. Was it a bad idea? You know, um, so it's sort of like a trial for the first time to offer that sort of secure, uh, storage for folks.
Okay, so just a follow-up. So is Ministry with Community going to decide who gets the lockers? Is there a timeframe where I just have the locker for life? I move out of town with the key, is it still my locker? Like Ministry with Community is figuring all of that out, considering they weren't a part of the conversation?
Yeah, thank you. I don't know the answers to that. I think first we needed to identify if the, we want to see this move forward, but we want to have a Board discussion if there was a, an appetite for that. Um, so I think those are all valid questions. I know each of the items will be double keyed or double keyed, so the individual won't hold the only key to the locker. Um, but probably within programming, we could design, you know, how we ensure that something's not just dumped there and then never recovered, or, um, we could bring that back if there's interest in making the expenditure, and we'll go back to the service providers and come back with more information. So, uh, let's go to Vice Chair and the Commissioner DeLu.
Um, first off, I have no problem with fifteen thousand dollars for, for, for lockers. Um, we are on our consent agenda, we're raising the amount for a media firm from one fifty to five hundred, and that's on our consent agenda, and we're talking about fifteen thousand dollars for lockers. I, I've got absolutely no problem with fifteen thousand dollars for, for, for lockers. If they need more, we, we can find fifteen thousand dollars for more. Um, I, I, I think quite frankly, we should give the, the Chair the discretion to, to make these types of determinations and put it on the consent agenda because fifteen thousand dollars for lockers, we're talking about the double keys and the programming of it and everything else. I think we're getting into the weeds and we, we, we need to like take a step back and say, where are our big expenditures? And look at those, but yeah, as far as fifteen thousand dollars for lockers, I have absolutely no problem with that. Chair, I have no problem with you having those small ideas on small expenditures. I appreciate you bringing it to the, to the County Commission for discussion. But something this small, I, I trust you on that, so.
Commissioner DeLu, and thank you Vice Chair.
The Chair doesn't have small ideas. Um, yeah, I totally support this because I've dealt with people, I mean, as if their life isn't bad enough and then people steal all their stuff and they're just... My only question is, and I'm not saying we, we do enough for the homeless, but does the City of Kalamazoo contribute to things that, I mean, we're trying to do for the homeless, like, because obviously these people are down, they're in the City of Kalamazoo. Do they step up like the County does to help these folks and we're just not aware of it? Or I just wonder what their contribution is to like something like this?
Um, thank you for that question. So to, to speak to that, I think each of us have roles to play. And the City of Kalamazoo, I think, um, really needs additional support to be able to tackle uh, the issues of people who are unhoused in, in this community. And our cooperation and collaboration together is really important. I mentioned, the first time I heard discussion around locked storage in the community was at the City of Kalamazoo. And I inquired what's been the barrier to that, and it was really about a barrier of, of capacity and focus. Other things come up in the agenda and become prioritized and it just never made it over the finish line. Um, but, you know, there is partnership at the table. They helped to generate the idea and we're going to help to advance it, uh, over the finish line, and I think we'll continue to look for opportunities to collaborate, not just with the City of Kalamazoo, but the City of Portage, Kalamazoo Township, uh, the rest of, you know, Comstock, um, you know, all of our parchment, all of our community members, because, you know, unhoused people are everywhere in Kalamazoo County. We certainly see a concentration of them in the city, but when we, we met on land use at Cooper Township a couple of weeks ago, and we talked a lot there about individuals that they have living in elements in Cooper and the struggle with getting them to services and getting them, the conflict with private property owners and et cetera. So point is taken, and I think the dialogue is ongoing. Yep, uh, Commissioner Morales.
I was going to say the same thing. I agree with you, DeLu, um, that people step in, but they're flushed here from all the other areas. So I would like to see by Ann from Portage, seems to think that there's not a houseless population that is out there and that everything should be shifted to District One, which I not agree with. I think that it needs to be sifted everywhere. But where the most tax paying dollars are being collected, it seems like their voice outpower, overpowers what the need is around Kalamazoo County, and that's how they get flushed in the downtown, you know, area in City of Kalamazoo. So I would like if the City and Portage and other municipalities are listening, we need your help with this, thank you.
Good. Thank you Commissioners. Anything further on that one? Okay, so we'll seek some more information about implementation. We'll come back with an update to Commissioners at that time. All right, our next, we have a first reading of resolution, Direct County Treasurer to invest Housing Millage Fund, two ninety-seven receipts separately from the pooled funds account. So this again would just keep any of those housing resources that are sitting in investments partitioned for future, you know, uh, allocation for housing specifically. And the second is a first reading proclamation honoring Pastor Michael L. Brown. Right, we also now have a closed session. Anyone, here's the motion if you want to.
I move that we move into closed session to further consider the periodic personal evaluation of the County Administrator pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six A, two-six-eight A.
Motion is made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Any further discussion? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Chair Strep?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler? Commissioner DeLu?
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur?
Yes.
You have eight yes.
All right, that motion carries. We'll turn to closed session. All right, that motion carries. We'll turn to closed session. Thank you.
Entertain a motion to bring us out of closed session.
Still moved.
Motion made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Any further discussion? Uh, Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Chair Strzeps?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler? Commissioner DeLu?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gissler?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur? Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes from closed session?
Still moved.
Motion made by Vice Chair Taylor, Commissioner, uh, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Chair Strzeps?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler? Commissioner DeLu?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gissler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mazur? Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. This time we've extended the, uh, completed the agenda for a committee of the whole, call that meeting adjourned, and then we will reconvene the regular business meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Um, and at this time, we will take a prerogative fifteen minute. Uh, be, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Clerk, would please call a roll?
Commissioner Morales?
Present.
Commissioner Ray?
Present.
Chair Strzeps?
Here.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler? Commissioner DeLu?
Here.
Commissioner Gissler?
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Here.
Commissioner Mazur? You have seven present.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will now, uh, be in recess for fifteen minutes.
All right, I'm gonna reconvene the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners regular business meeting All right, I'm gonna reconvene the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners regular business meeting for November 5th, 2025. for November 5th, 2025. Commissioners, I know we have some business we're still attending to. Commissioners, I know we have some business we're still attending to. We're gonna go through proclamations before we circle back to our discussion from earlier. We're gonna go through proclamations before we circle back to our discussion from earlier. So let's go first into item number one, our invocation and reflection. So let's go first into item number one, our invocation and reflection. And Commissioner Vice Chair Protem Hepler will take us through that. And Commissioner Vice Chair Protem Hepler will take us through that.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. I think first off, I'm gonna ask for just a moment of silence. I think first off, I'm gonna ask for just a moment of silence. We lost a firefighter today in a traffic fatality here in Kalamazoo County. We lost a firefighter today in a traffic fatality here in Kalamazoo County. I'd ask you all to take a moment to reflect on that for just a second. I'd ask you all to take a moment to reflect on that for just a second. Thank you. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessing. Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessing. We thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. Give us strength to do the great things, to help our local citizens and businesses Give us strength to do the great things, to help our local citizens and businesses and our community to thrive. and our community to thrive. Give us strength to see what needs to be seen, do what needs to be done. Give us strength to see what needs to be seen, do what needs to be done. Provide us the strength to move ahead. Provide us the strength to move ahead. And we want to thank all of those who are out there providing services to our community. And we want to thank all of those who are out there providing services to our community. Our men and women, both in the military, here and abroad, Our men and women, both in the military, here and abroad, our firefighters, police officers, our ambulance folks, our firefighters, police officers, our ambulance folks, all of our county employees who work diligently to make Kalamazoo a great place to live, work, and play. all of our county employees who work diligently to make Kalamazoo a great place to live, work, and play. Please forgive us for when we maybe don't get it done the way you see that it should have been done. Please forgive us for when we maybe don't get it done the way you see that it should have been done. But give us strength to continue to move on and make everybody understand that there's always two sides to a coin. But give us strength to continue to move on and make everybody understand that there's always two sides to a coin. And we need to look at the problems from a lot of different perspectives. And we need to look at the problems from a lot of different perspectives. And sometimes more eyes on a problem will come to a better resolution than just our simple opinion. And sometimes more eyes on a problem will come to a better resolution than just our simple opinion. With this, I ask you in your name, amen. With this, I ask you in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've already called a roll for this session. Thank you. We've already called a roll for this session. So we're gonna go to item number four for proclamations. So we're gonna go to item number four for proclamations. Item 2025-1315, request for approval proclamation honoring Kelly LaRochelle for 25 years of service. Item 2025-1315, request for approval proclamation honoring Kelly LaRochelle for 25 years of service. Commissioner DeLu is going to read this, and I'd like to present as well. Commissioner DeLu is going to read this, and I'd like to present as well. Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful. Please join us. Wonderful. Please join us. Commissioner DeLu would like to honor your service. Commissioner DeLu would like to honor your service.
So honoring people at her age reminds me of a whole lot of them. So honoring people at her age reminds me of a whole lot of them. Because she reminded me I did her background investigation, like back in the 1900s or something like that. Because she reminded me I did her background investigation, like back in the 1900s or something like that. 1999, geez. 1999, geez. This is to honor Kelly LaRochelle. This is to honor Kelly LaRochelle. Whereas Kelly LaRochelle has served the residents of Kalamazoo County for 25 years as of October 16th, 2025. Whereas Kelly LaRochelle has served the residents of Kalamazoo County for 25 years as of October 16th, 2025. And whereas Kelly has faithfully served as a victim advocate and truly answers her calling And whereas Kelly has faithfully served as a victim advocate and truly answers her calling by treating helpless victims and witnesses with respect, compassion, kindness, and empathy. by treating helpless victims and witnesses with respect, compassion, kindness, and empathy. Her experience is valued whether assisting victims, working with colleagues, Her experience is valued whether assisting victims, working with colleagues, or collaborating with other service organizations that strive to make our community a safer place. or collaborating with other service organizations that strive to make our community a safer place. And whereas the county of Kalamazoo wishes to acknowledge and honor employees And whereas the county of Kalamazoo wishes to acknowledge and honor employees who have longevity under the umbrella of county government, who have longevity under the umbrella of county government, since it is through their longevity that expertise in the employee's particular field is achieved. since it is through their longevity that expertise in the employee's particular field is achieved. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge with gratitude the many years of dedication and service Kelly has imparted does hereby acknowledge with gratitude the many years of dedication and service Kelly has imparted to the residents of the county and offers its best wishes for many more years of mutual association. to the residents of the county and offers its best wishes for many more years of mutual association. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Yeah, congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. So we have a motion from Commissioner DeLu, support from Vice Chair Protem Hepler. So we have a motion from Commissioner DeLu, support from Vice Chair Protem Hepler. Clerk, please call the roll. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ray, Chair Straps. Commissioner Ray, Chair Straps.
Yes. Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor. Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner Wheeler.
Commissioner DeLu.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler. Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Protem Hepler. Vice Chair Protem Hepler.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur. Commissioner Mazur. Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Morales.
Yes. Yes.
You have six yes. You have six yes.
Now officially, congratulations. Thank you. Now officially, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for your patience and for your, tonight, and for all of your service. Thank you for your patience and for your, tonight, and for all of your service. We'll go to our next item, 2025-1345, request for approval proclamation recognizing We'll go to our next item, 2025-1345, request for approval proclamation recognizing the week of November 4th through 11th, 2025 as Operation Green Light for Veterans. the week of November 4th through 11th, 2025 as Operation Green Light for Veterans. It's a motion made by Commissioner DeLu, supported by Vice Chair Protem Hepler. So motion made by Commissioner DeLu, supported by Vice Chair Protem Hepler. We do have folks in attendance this evening. We do have folks in attendance this evening. Do you want to present it, Commissioner DeLu? Do you want to present it, Commissioner DeLu? We have a motion. We'll let Commissioner DeLu read that on. We have a motion. We'll let Commissioner DeLu read that on. Please come forward. Thank you. Please come forward. Thank you.
We have members of the Veterans Service Office and the Board for the Veterans Service Office here. We have members of the Veterans Service Office and the Board for the Veterans Service Office here. So this is a proclamation, Operation Green Light for Veterans 2025. So this is a proclamation, Operation Green Light for Veterans 2025. Whereas the residents of Kalamazoo County have great respect, admiration, Whereas the residents of Kalamazoo County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the individuals who have selflessly served our country, this community, and the armed forces. and the utmost gratitude for all the individuals who have selflessly served our country, this community, and the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our residents. have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our residents. And whereas the Kalamazoo County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom And whereas the Kalamazoo County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, And whereas the veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by function as county veteran service officers in 29 states and by function as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk of suicide during their first year after military service. are at a high risk of suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for the veterans. to recognize Operation Green Light for the veterans. And whereas Kalamazoo County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel And whereas Kalamazoo County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore, be it proclaimed with designation as Green Light for Veterans County, Now therefore, be proclaimed with designation as Green Light for Veterans County, Kalamazoo hereby declares November 4th through the 11th, 2025 Kalamazoo hereby declares November 4th through the 11th, 2025 as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of those transitioning from active service. of those transitioning from active service. And be it further proclaimed that in observance of our Operation Green Light, And be it further proclaimed that in observance of our Operation Green Light, Kalamazoo County will display green lights on many of its buildings and Kalamazoo County Veterans Service. Kalamazoo County will display green lights on many of its buildings and Kalamazoo County Veterans Service.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner DeLu, supported by Vice Chair Taylor. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner DeLu, supported by Vice Chair Taylor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Congratulations. Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you so much for coming and for your service. Thank you so much for coming and for your service. All right, at this time, we are gonna circle back to our closed session. All right, at this time, we are gonna circle back to our closed session. So entertain a motion from Vice Chair. So entertain a motion from Vice Chair.
I move that we move into closed session to further consideration, I move that we move into closed session to further consideration, to consider the periodic personnel evaluation of the county administrator pursuant to MCL 15.268A. to consider the periodic personnel evaluation of the county administrator pursuant to MCL 15.268A.
Motion made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Protem Hepler. Motion made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Protem Hepler. Clerk, please call the roll. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Taylor. Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner DeLu. Commissioner DeLu.
Yeah. Yeah.
Commissioner Gisler. Commissioner Gisler.
No.
No.
Vice Chair Protem Hepler. Vice Chair Protem Hepler. Commissioner Mazur. Commissioner Mazur. Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Morales.
Of course, yes. Of course, yes.
Commissioner Ray. Commissioner Ray.
No. No.
Chair Straps. Chair Straps.
Yes. Yes.
You have five yes. You have five yes.
That motion carries. That motion carries. We'll move to closed session. We'll move to closed session. All right, we are going to come out of closed session, entertain a motion to bring us out.
Motion.
Motion's made by Vice Chair Pro Tim Hepler, supported by Vice Chair Taylor, to come out of closed session. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Wheeler? Commissioner DeLu?
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Hepler? Commissioner Mazur? Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Chair Strebs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
You have seven yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the second closed session. The first one from this meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tim Hepler. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner DeLu? Commissioner Gisler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Hepler? Commissioner Mazur? Commissioner Morales? Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Chair Strebs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler? Seven yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Okay. We are going to now move forward. As we were into the regular agenda, we had completed our proclamations that brought us to item five, communications. Item 2025-1311, Grand Traverse County Resolution 94-2025, opposing the MDHH's plan for a competitive procurement process for the prepaid inpatient health plans. Item 2025-1384, Lelandale County Resolution Number 2025-017, resolution opposing Michigan Department of Health and Human Services' plan to implement a competitive procurement process for prepaid inpatient health plan. And item 2025-1394, resolution for Comstock Charter Township, establishing a commercial rehabilitation district number one. Right hand received of those items. Any other communications?
We also, we also have a resolution 25-55 from the City of Kalamazoo approving an application for a commercial redevelopment exemption, exemption certificate at 227 West Michigan Avenue and resolution 25-56 approving an application for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate at 261 East Kalamazoo Ave. And a notice from Indiana Michigan Power Company, case number U-21682, whatever that means.
Thank you. I do not have access to my laptop and that is, those items were not in my, in my printed agenda. So Commissioners, if, oh, thank you. So Commissioners, if, oh, thank you.
Chair. Chair.
Thank you so much. Sorry Commissioner Hepler for stealing your laptop again. And thank you Vice Chair. Okay. We are completed with communications, we'll move on to item number six approval of the minutes. Item twenty twenty-five thirteen eighty-three. And entertain a motion. Motion made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler for the approval of the October twenty-first twenty twenty-five Draft Committee of the Whole and Statutory Annual Board Meeting Minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Let's go to item seven, which is approval of the agenda, we have some changes in order.
Chair, I move that the consideration of the Community Grant Fund Award be added under new business.
What's the item number?
Community Grants Fund Awards.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you so much. Thank you.
And then. New business, and then also, I don't have the item number here for the other one. And that item number. Uh, two-two-two zero-two-five dash one-three-five-five be voted on at the next Board of Commissioners meeting. Or be postponed two weeks until the next meeting. What's the appropriate? Okay.
We can vote, pull it from the agenda or postpone it till the dates or council?
That is correct ma'am.
Okay, I would move that we postpone that to a date of November nineteenth. Or no, November eighteenth twenty twenty-five.
But Madam Chair, maybe we have two separate motions though, one to move the community grants to new business, you voted on that and then the second one to postpone the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's move first the motion to accept the community grant allocations into new business. Motion has been made by Vice Chair Taylor. Support by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion is added to new business. Next motion for a postponement?
Chair, I move that we postpone till November eighteenth our next county's Board of Commissioners meeting. Item number twenty twenty-five dash one-three-five-five.
There's motion, is there support? Motion is made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Commissioner DeLu. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Uh, Vice Chair Pro Tem, go ahead.
I'd like to vote, uh, twenty twenty-five one-two-seven-one. From the consent agenda to non-consent agenda.
Item twenty twenty-five one-two-seven-one. And we'll move that to the non-consent agenda. Okay. Any other amendments to the agenda? Are you looking for something else? It's the item. Counsel?
Madam Chair, that is in regards to the EEOP, the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan that we are required to adopt as there are grants which are dependent upon this, especially as it deals with the airport which are due this month. And that's one reason why it's on for tonight.
Thank you, we can bring that into discussion under non-consent, is the request?
Yeah.
Item number twenty twenty-five thirteen forty-six. Okay, any other? Seeing no others, I take the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, motion by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Commissioner DeLu to accept the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? And roll call vote please clerk.
Commissioner Gisler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler? Commissioner Mazur? Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Chair Strebs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler? Commissioner DeLu?
Yeah.
You have seven yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. The agenda is accepted. So we'll now move on to item eight for presentations, there are none. To item nine for public hearings, there are none. To item ten, our first opportunity for public comment in this session. Members can participate in person or by phone as listed in the agenda. If you wish to speak during both public comment periods, you may. If you're participating digitally, you'll press star three again to re-enter the queue after the first session has ended. You have up to three minutes to address the board in a professional and respectful manner. Once you are recognized, please share your name and where you are from. Seeing someone in chambers, welcome prosecutor.
Thank you very much Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem, members of the Board of Commissioners. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you for your proclamation recognizing victim advocate Kelly LaRochelle for her service to this community. She is an extraordinary person, she is an extraordinary employee. She has done more good for this community and for victims in this community than probably any of us will ever recognize. I also wanted to say thank you to you, the board, for recognizing that she was here, that other members of the Prosecutor's Office were here with her at six-thirty PM after an already long day and for moving your agenda, I know that you had other important businesses as well that was pending. But to move that to the front of your agenda so that they weren't delayed any longer in being here, so thank you very much for the manner in which you handled that, and again, thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you prosecutor. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, Administrator, is there anyone online? Okay. We'll move forward to item eleven, our consent agenda.
Chair, I move that we vote on all consent agenda items at one time and that they be considered a consent agenda by the board.
Some motion made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Any further discussion? Uh, excuse me. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur? Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray? Chair Strebs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler? Commissioner DeLu?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gisler?
Yes.
You have seven yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. All right, I'm just going to, I don't have one of the agenda number items. But the, we'll move to our non-consent and unfinished business and general orders, there are none. And to new business, non-consent, item thirteen. So first we can take up as item twenty twenty-five thirteen forty-six, this was the request to approve a resolution adopting the Equal Opportunity Employment Plan from twenty twenty-five. Vice Chair Pro Tem, you requested discussion.
Thank you Chair, I just would like some clarification on this. Right now, I believe that our corporate counsel takes care of this already and you want to move this away from you to our DEI person. And, um, I'm just kind of, why?
Thank you Vice Chair Pro Tem, Counsel.
Thank you so much Madam Chair. Um, as the issues surrounding equal opportunity plans have come about, research indicates that the trend is to move away from the corporation councils, more to the specialized diversity, equity and inclusion officers who has specific training which can recognize some of the subtleties which may be present and conflicts which could arise. Furthermore, there is an inherent conflict of interest in having the EEOP officer and corporation council be the same person. As that there may be issues where I may determine, well, that's not a violation of EEOP and I'm not going to move it forward for consideration in a legal way, in a legal manner. But by having the DEI officer in charge, it adds another layer of protection, especially to these sensitive issues. Thank you.
Thank you Counsel, Vice Chair Pro Tem.
My understanding is that we have not had a whole lot of these issues. In fact, I believe maybe two in the last year or so. And I guess my concern is, is that, or my thought is, is that we're putting more work on our DEI person and our, this really is a more legal matter than it is. Somebody else, or, you know, somebody else's preview, somebody else's thing, and I guess I would, I would be more comfortable having our legal counsel look at it and dot the i's and cross the t's. So I guess that's just my concern. I guess we'll go where it wants to go, but I guess kind of felt that it's more in your line, we have, you know, three counselors that represent the county. That they have a little more flexibility and skill level in legal matters and I kind of felt more comfortable with you folks handling these things than so, than somebody that doesn't have that skill level. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair Pro Tem, Commissioner Morales.
Thank you Chair, so, um, as legal counsel, I think that's why you decided to put that under the purview of the DEI director. So I support you in that transition. Because at the end of the day, it's going to have to go through you for legal consultation moving forward anyway. So I support what you have here, as our legal counsel, you know best. As an expert, I respect that you are relying on, um, oh shoot. Dale, I was saying Dale, but I didn't want to say, okay, Dale, to bring that information forward, that's their job. So, like I said, I, I, I'm not concerned that Dale is overwhelmed, I don't, I didn't hear that he, they were. So I respect your opinion on that and I support it.
Madam Chair?
Thank you Commissioner Morales, Counsel.
And just too much, this was in consultation with Dale Darnell, our Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Furthermore, by taking out general counsel at this point, people are more likely to report issues related to, because there's certain, a certain intimidation factor which says, well, if I go to corporation counsel. Whereas people may feel more comfortable coming forth with that first layer in diversity, equity, inclusion in that office rather than corporation counsel. So that's one reason that the trend is to move towards the diversity, equity and inclusion officer being the EEOP officer. Thank you.
Thank you Counsel, Vice Chair.
Just really quick, the last form of appeal is the full Board of Commissioners, correct?
That is correct.
And you represent the full Board of Commissioners, so at the end of the day, there is a potential for a conflict of interest. And I, I understand.
Anything further? We've had some discussion, we need to entertain a motion. Motion is made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Commissioner Morales. For the, uh, there it goes, resolution adopting the Equal Opportunity Employment Plan twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay, we will go next to item twenty twenty-five twelve seventy-one. Which was a request for approval and signature of Well-designed Studio Contract Amendment Number One. Vice Chair.
And I can be an easy yes on this, I just, I couldn't determine it from the bar and I meant to ask you Kevin in between, Dr. Callen in between meetings, but the, this comes out of individual departmental budgets, right? It's not a, it's not a separate funding source, it's just limiting the, it's just, how do I put this? It's just lowering the, or raising the threshold that they can use this certain vendor without going through a procurement process? Am I correct in that statement?
Yes, Vice Chair, so this is a.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you Administrator.
Yeah, thank you Chair, Vice Chair, this is a time and materials management agreement, so what it did was increase the limit because, just to basically give us more capacity to within, but yeah, these are budgeted items within specific budgets, whether it's through communications or other departmental budgets. It just increases the time and materials limit that we can reach, should we need that room, because we've already hit the capacity. Or the threshold rather.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that now, I just needed to hear that it came out of the budget, it said various funding sources in the bar, so I got a little confused, but I'm good now.
Thank you, any further questions? Commissioner Gisler?
Thank you Chair. Kevin, is this spread, I, I know this isn't the case evenly among the departments? Or are there some that use it a lot more than others? And if so, what are those departments?
Go ahead Administrator, thank you.
Thank you Chair, Commissioner Gisler, I, I don't deal with this in particular, I, I need experts to come up that, that actually deal with this, so I'll have Deputy Administrators.
Deputy Administrator.
It's okay.
Welcome Deputy.
Thank you, I can answer that easily, so it is dependent on every department's budget, the primary people that have used the marketing services has been Health and Community Services, Administration has, I know the Clerk Register of Deeds has, and I may be missing a, a department or two. It is offered and we do talk about it, a lot of times it's for, you know, if there's a project that they have or a large campaign and we just don't have the communications team time to work on that and if there is budget allowed, we do have some budget in the Communications Division as well, which is open to anyone, so even if that particular department doesn't, if we have funds to utilize it, we do have that as well.
Thank you Commissioner Gisler, thank you Deputy Administrator, any others? All right. All right, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion is made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler for the approval and signature of a Well-designed Studio Contract Amendment Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Chair, you want to take us into the community grants?
Sure Chair, thank you, I move that the consideration of the community grants funding awarded to the following. WMU Medical School for twenty-five thousand five hundred forty-four dollars, Village of Schoolcraft for eighteen thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars. City of Parchment for fifty thousand dollars, Charlie's Place for fifty thousand dollars, First Day Shoe Fund for fifteen thousand dollars.
Vice Chair, I'm, I'm sorry to.
Counsel.
I, I understand with the numbers, we just wanted to put who it would and then we would define the numbers in the agreements, that was my understanding.
That's fine, we can streamline, simplify them.
Okay, yeah, I'll simplify that, we already discussed the exact numbers, but it's, I was pretty proud of my math, but that's okay. Um, but yeah. Um but uh yeah, that I I move that the community grants uh funding be awarded to the following: WM Medical School, Village of Schoolcraft, City of Parchment, Charlie's Place, First Day Shoe Fund, Mothers of Hope, Oshkosh Township, Local Jurn- Journalism Foundation, Senior Services of Southwest Michigan, CARES, Girl Scouts Heart of Michigan and Texas Charter Township. And that the county administrator is authorized to execute the agreements pertaining thereto on behalf of the county.
Thank you. Motion? Uh we worked on that hard, made by Vice Chair and supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Do we have further discussion? Commissioner Gissler?
I have a question. Uh Senior Services is still Senior Services? It's not Milestone Senior Services?
Uh Administrator.
Thank you Chair. Yes, Commissioner Gissler. So they do business as Milestone Senior Services, but their actual organization name, organizational name is Senior Services of Southwest Michigan uh to the IRS. Yep, sounds good.
Thank you Administrator. Any other questions? Vice Chair and then Commissioner Duloo.
Just really quick. So we won't see this again until the claims list. It won't have to come back for with for the dollar amounts? No?
It won't, but but that's the prerogative. If you want them to come back, we could bring them back to the board.
Okay, I just, okay. I thought it would be easier to have the dollar amounts, but okay, but that's, that I'm I'm good with whatever.
Commissioner Duloo?
Not a question, just a comment. I want to thank this board for supporting our local townships and uh City of Parchment uh very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Administrator.
Chair, if if there's hesitation from the board about authorizing me to sign those contracts, we're willing to bring them back. The reason why I didn't want the dollar amounts to be written or or stipulated or articulated verbally is because um as I did the math in Excel, the um allocation to Mothers of Hope actually increased a hundred and fifty dollars. So the math that I have is probably nearly identical to the vice chairs. But when I did the math, we're about a hundred and fifty dollars under four hundred thousand, so I gave it to Mothers of Hope. So in the interest of transparency, their actual allocation would be twenty-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars. Okay, perfect.
Alright, thank you. Are we comfortable with the Administrator executing the contracts? Alright, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you Commissioners. Let's go to item fourteen, our last opportunity for public comment. Join us at the podium in person or by pressing star three if you called in and are in the queue. Anyone wishing wishing to make public comment? I am seeing none. Let's go on to item fifteen. Reports of the officers, bodies, administrator and controller. Um I will just be and thank everybody uh who participated in our local elections yesterday uh to our returning and new coming colleagues in both the uh in all of the cities of Kalamazoo, Portage and Parchment. Congratulations also to the City of Portage for supporting their public schools. I hope to see other local school districts uh support their local schools and buildings in the future. Um participating in democracy i- is an important process and it can be pivotal moments uh in our nation and our society, each one of them having significant impact. Now whether we win or lose in the election process, what matters most is that we participate. And um overall, it can look like voter turnout was low, but there were many jurisdictions and precincts without anything to vote for yesterday. So when looking at the total number of voters in the county who voted, not all of them had something in front of them yesterday. If you had the opportunity to vote and you didn't, I encourage you to recognize that your voice matters. We see many opportunities across the country where we can see when we remember that we have a voice and that we have uh the ability to steer the future of our country. It's always worth participating. With that, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Um and uh I, yeah, it's really easy to sensationalize the low voter turnout as compared to one year ago today when there was a presidential election and everybody in the county had something to vote on. It's pretty easy to sensationalize those those sorts of things. But I I really wanted to uh thank the the clerks, the local clerks and probably I probably should thank the county clerk as well. But the the they've been putting in a lot of hours for this and it's not just Election Day. It's the printing of the ballots. It's it's going through testing, all the different things that they put in and the person taking our minutes right now has told an all-nighter last night. And uh here he is again doing doing work for for the county. So I I just wanted to be remiss if I didn't thank the clerks out there. And I also wanted to congratulate the new people elected for the City of Portage and the City of Kalamazoo. Um I, you know, it, they think the the voters spoke with the, that they like things the way they are, but they want a tiny little twist to change to it as well. So I think that that would, that's gonna play out well in the next few years. I'm excited about that. And then also I'd like to congratulate uh our Metro Transit on their uh their renewal and their their increased service. Um I think it shows it's a testament to the people in Kalamazoo County that value transportation, specifically to those that can't afford to buy their own car. So thank you. And that, uh Bo, it's probably time for bed.
Vice Chair Pro Tem.
Thank you Chair. Um I want to thank uh this board for their diligence and hard work, uh our administrator and and all of his staff and our other county employees out there that continually work hard to make Kalamazoo a great place to live, work and play. See, I got it in again. I've got it in twice tonight. And uh I want to thank also our, as I always do, our military, our police, our fire, uh our medical people, um they're out there every day trying to keep our community safe. And make this uh make this a great place to live. With that, have a safe week. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair Pro Tem. Administrator.
Thank you Chair. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem Commissioners, uh this evening I wanted to highlight uh some work we've been uh working on with our lobbyists. So uh we had some inquiries come through the Board of Public Works for uh potential bonding uh requests uh through the county for a water in sewer. I think it was really a sewer project for Oshkosh Township and I don't think that that will materialize to the Board of Public Works. Nonetheless, um we've been working with our lobbyists to pursue um a relationship with the state. There's a financing arm of the state that can work with the federal government uh through um there's called SWIPIA and WIPIA. It's an acronym for basically uh wastewater and uh so wastewater and sewer, or wastewater rather, in water projects. Other uh loans that they could get through the feds to secure financing for their projects. We're working with him on that uh and some state reps to see if they can champion some language in a bill to spin that up so that they would have access to more resources should they not be able to utilize counties throughout the state of Michigan. Um I wanted to uh also remind uh this body that on Friday at around nine thirty um at the uh verse, now I can't, Bert, Bert Lewis, Bert Lewis and Dickinson, Dickinson Softball uh Complex, uh they are hosting the US one thirty-one uh uh Business Route ribbon cutting. So just uh keep an eye out on that if you're able to make it nine thirty. And um uh again, we are working uh tomorrow on interviewing some candidates for the health officer position. Uh Chair Strebs will be involved in those interviews and then we'll hopefully have a candidate presented to the board at the November eighteenth meeting. And that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you Administrator. Commissioner Ray, would you like to start us?
Sure. Um I just want to say thank you to uh John, who's taking our minutes, who's working so hard for us at the county. That's it, Miami. He's so nice. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Morales?
I mean hurry up. Ray is still here. But thank you to the clerks and yeah, I it was a a long night. I just can't even imagine what it's gonna be like in twenty-eight again when they're up. Um but congratulations to the City of Kalamazoo, the new commissioners and um the incumbent Commissioner Hoffman who um is back serving. Special thanks to uh Commissioner Don Cooney. I have learned so much from him um during my time. He has been invaluable to this community and I get to see him because he's three houses down from me, but um yeah, he he's gonna be missed. And congratulations to um Councilman Ledbetter. I mean historically for him and Young to pull those numbers that they pulled in the City of Portage is a testament to their leadership. So I was very excited. Um I don't know the rest of the commissioners, so, but I was very excited to see them yesterday. Um it's gonna be cold and I just want to make sure to, you know, thank our emergency management for the hard work that they are doing to prepare our constituents for the upcoming uh winter season. And thank y'all. We we did some good work tonight. Good night.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Gissler?
Thank you Chair. I have only one uh comment tonight and that is concerning of the second Monday group that I've had up uh that's gonna be meeting next Monday at Mark's Diner on Romance at eight thirty in the morning and it's gonna be a very interesting uh presentation from the county's equalization director, Matt Hanson. Most people know the word equalization, but don't have a clue what it's all about. And we're gonna take copious notes and I'll give you a report. So if you want to get there, it's eight thirty next Monday at Mark's Diner on Romance in Portage and Matt Hanson's gonna dazzle us.
Thank you, Commissioner Gissler. Or I'm sorry, tired. Commissioner Duloo?
When do we get the airplane coupons? Winter's coming. Can I smack him? Uh next Tuesday, November eleventh is Veterans Day. The venue celebrating Veterans Day in Kalamazoo has totally changed. Next Tuesday at two o'clock at the National Guard Armory and Park View. They're no longer doing it at that Rosa Parks Park in Kalamazoo. I had a lot of issues with weather in the past and they're just, um it'll be a bigger event and probably better attended, but inside the Armory, two o'clock next week, Tuesday. Thank you.
See you there. Alright, with that, thank you clerk. I I hassled him extra today too, so I appreciate him. With that, we're adjourned.